This conference will now be recorded.
Wow, we have a full house.
Come on Frank.
I always feel better once Frank's in.
By the way, who's talking now?
Um, right now, this is Dorothea Chigrelly, the village.
Okay, Dorothea, I got it.
Hey, Dorothea, Bill McBride, would you, would you at some point announce everybody who's on the line?
Well, we can certainly give that a shot. Oh, waiting on Frank.
Poor Frank. Frank Galusha has arrived.
Alright.
Looking for Frank, looking for Frank, there he is.
There I am.
There you are.
Okay.
Good deal.
Can Frank hear and speak though?
He can hear and speak. All good. Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to call a meeting to order. Do I have a second?
Well, second that, trustee Galusha.
Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
I certainly will. Um, trustee Stutzer?
Stutzer, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passed.
Does anyone have any conflicts of interest they would like to disclose?
Lanfear, I do not.
Stutzer, I do not.
Corby, I do not.
Trustee Galusha, I have nothing to declare.
Dan?
I have nothing to declare.
Alright, um, first issue is the DPW report.
Um. Ma'am?
Lily, did you wanna?
I do, I do. Um, with all due respect, Mayor Corby, I would like to request to change the agenda order slightly this evening. As I have a proclamation I would like to read, may I, may I take the liberty of doing that at this time?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Village of Pittsburgh. Whereas Robert C. Corby has assiduously served as mayor of the village of Pittsburgh for 28 years, a truly distinguished career of public service, applying a rare combination of talents, deep understanding of the Pittsburgh community, and strong drive for continual commitment of the quality of life for village residents. And whereas Robert C. Corby, while serving as mayor, through his collective knowledge, talents, and informed guidance, and collaborative and planful approach, has embodied the fundamental role of local village government for village residents and property owners. And whereas, on Robert C. Corby's vigilant watch, through his progressive commitment to preserving historic character and modeling context, sensitive development, retention of vital central institutional anchors, such as the Sutherland High School, Pittsburgh Community Library, and the Spiegel Community Center, effectuation of two community-driven plans for the future, updating and streamlining the application of village codes, creation of three distinct public parks, including the Shane Place Erie Canal Linear Park, and implementation of numerous traffic calming initiatives, the village has prospered and become enhanced as a highly desirable community in which to live, work, invest, and enjoy, thus becoming a model for other communities. And whereas Robert C. Corby's talents have been recognized statewide with prestigious awards for excellence in historic preservation, architectural and urban design, land use planning, and distinguished public service from the American Institute of Architects, American Planning Association, American Public Works Association, and New York Conference of Mayors, Landmark Society of Western New York, among others. Whereas Robert C. Corby has enthusiastically dedicated the majority of his adult life to village of Pittsburgh government and its people. Without question, the unique qualities and talents of Mayor Corby have made him a truly irreplaceable figure in the history of our village and the greater Pittsburgh community. Now therefore be it resolved that as Robert C. Corby has dedicated over 28 years to the people of the village of Pittsburgh, we, the Board of Trustees, in recognition of his dedicated public service and leadership, do hereby designate the 10 acres of village-owned parkland in the northwest quadrant of the village, hereafter to be named the Robert C. Corby Arboretum and Wildlife Sanctuary. Thank you. And if we have any public comment, we would invite it at this time.
Yes, I would like to say something. This is Fran Kramer. First of all, I want to compliment you on reminding us all what's happened the past 28 years. So many accomplishments in so many areas. We'll always remember Bob. And by the way, we will continue to hopefully interact in some way with Bob. Because his knowledge and his experience is just unparalleled. Uh, we consider it an absolute joy and delight and a privilege to know him and continue to know him, to follow his advice, his leadership, his balancing act in so many ways in terms of the village. But basically, he's been, he's really, as you say, he's a mayor's mayor. He really, for a small village, has exemplified, and I'm not, I'm making this up guys, I'm not reading it, has exemplified what we would all want in any mayor, mayor in any town, and especially one as historic as Pittsburgh Village. So Fran and Herb Kramer say thank you. And not till we meet again, because we're gonna keep in touch with you and we hope you keep in touch with us. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Um, this is Bill McBride. Can I, can I make a statement too?
Yes.
Um, I, I've lived here 27 years, so I'm not quite as old as Bob, but uh, I've raised four kids here and I want to offer a tribute up to Bob from a slightly different perspective. I raised four kids here who are now spread around the country. Um, but they, they all say this is the finest place in there. And they're, they're out in California and they're in Nashville and they're all over. And they all say this is the finest area that they've ever lived in and a great area to be raised in. And a big part of that I attribute to Bob, not just the physical character of this village, but the fact that, um, we were gonna lose a school building, which is one of the best schools in the country, um, right up the street at Sutherland. Bob worked hard to keep that here. He worked hard to get the library here. Um, um, and so for kids growing up, this was a fantastic place to grow up in. That, that they'll always remember as being, um, the, the finest place to be raised in, in the country. So I put a little different perspective on Bob's contributions because he, he gets remembered as, as the architect who maintained the historic character of the village, but he did a lot more than that to make this a wonderful town to live in. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, this is Art Pierce, if possible?
Go ahead, Art.
Uh, yes, thank you for the opportunity. First of all, I'd like to thank Lily and whomever else was involved with drafting of the resolution. It was very well spoken, comprehensive, thorough, and so appropriate across the board, as well as the other two residents and their comments. Um, rather than repeat that, but I'm in total agreement with what has been stated and compliments to Bob. His dedication, his unending and unique service dedication to the community at large. I think everybody here recognizes because of the day in, day out, week by week, month by week, year by year, that Bob has provided, once again, with his insight, personal, professional performance, with always the central concern of the light standard of living within this community. So I cannot have enough words to say here in gratitude for Bob. Once again, his unending commitment to this community. The image that he has provided across the area, across the county, and I'm certainly beyond in all his professional capabilities. All of the programs that he has instituted and for all those that have had any experience and exposure with any kind of other outside agencies, the government, and any other agencies involved such as DOT and the like, that it's a long drawn out process. And Bob has been religious in his dedication, his unending, once again, prodding away, working away with the community at large here again to get things accomplished. And there's multitude of evidence, including what was stated before, the fine quality, the vitality of the village, and the projects that are currently in place. Um, all thanks to you, Bob. Um, I'll, I'll end it at that point and I'm hoping I got the point across. Thank you very much for all that you've done. I'm hoping that that will continue in whatever endeavor you choose, but certainly to continue to see you on the village streets and involved in our ongoing efforts to continue to make this village one of the best places in the state, in the country. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Art.
This is Dave Ferris. I'd like to share some comments on behalf of myself and my wife Anne. We're 27 months old, haven't known. Uh, I want to say thank you, Mayor Corby, for years of dedicated service to our village and community. We've lived in the village during your entire services, Mayor. Uh, like Bill McBride, we've raised children here and they know it's a special place. We've seen the wonderful changes and improved quality of life during this time. The implementation of your vision of what makes the village livable and a neighborhood where people desire to live will be your legacy. You fought to keep a library, recreation center, high school in the village, realizing how important they are to a viable village unlike neighboring towns. You did this through the development of strong partnerships with the town and schools. You saw the natural beauty of Northwest Canalfront property and worked for years to partner with the town, which acquired adjacent property to make a park area possible. Then you helped the town get a critical state environmental grant to fund the park development. And importantly, you saw the potential Shane Place and the Canalfront helping lead the transformation of what was formerly a dirt road acre crouch area. With your leadership, the village established a moratorium, enabling the village to develop an award-winning comprehensive plan and updated code. As a result of the rezoning to a creative mixed use, a developer will now be able to economically repurpose many of the historic barns, saving the barns from being torn down as was previously proposed. You worked tirelessly to better our village, Bob. The history of village will always reflect the changes that took place under your leadership. Anne and I thank you for making our village a better community.
Thank you, Dave.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
This is Bonnie Salam. I would like to say a few words.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Thank you. Um, I can be brief, but I, I do want to be clear. Um, I think we get to enjoy this beautiful village and to show it off to our family and our friends when they visit us, uh, because Bob has been at the helm all these years. So all of the historic significance, the integrity of the four corners, the school and the library and the heart of the village, which has been mentioned. All of that will be Bob's legacy. So we are forever grateful, Bob, for all of your commitment and all that you have done and your vision. And I just want to send you my thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Anyone else?
Sure, uh, this is Clarica Mailen. Can everyone hear me?
Yep, you're good to go.
Oh, good. Um, yeah, I'm having trouble getting on on my computer, so I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure if I could even be heard. I just want to say, Bob Corby, Rob Corby, we love you. Mr. Pittsburgh, you're a legend in your own time. Don't let the politics get you down. We are here for you always, just like you have always been for Art. See ya on the streets, Mr. Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Claire.
Welcome out. Anyone else like to speak?
Dave Marshall?
Yes.
Frank, you want to go ahead?
Yes, this is, this is trustee Galusha. I'd like to say that, that Bob Corby's prime motivation for his 28 years as mayor has been the, the, the historic preservation of our village. But more importantly,
Going on.
the well-being, the well-being of our residents. For this, he has done an exemplary job.
I don't know, I think so.
Is there an audio problem?
Nope, we should be okay. I think I just took care of it. Go ahead, Frank. Someone else like to speak? Can I speak? Margot? Okay, go ahead, Margot.
Uh, someone once asked me, like, Did you talk to Andrew?
Um, it sounds like Kendra's not feeling well and she had to go to the hospital. We don't know.
What happened?
I, I'm sorry, I would ask if you're not speaking, please mute yourself. Thank you. Okay, Margot, you can go ahead.
Thanks, Dorothea. Uh, someone once asked me if I knew, uh, the, um, mayor of Pittsburgh and I said, yes, he's my best friend. And, uh, I have to say that Rob is a friend to everyone. And, um, and so he's, he's a lot of people's best friend. And I just, um, I, the minute I met him, I said, I am your servant. I just knew that I wanted to do something with him and for him because he has such a passion for wildlife and hasn't always felt, he's, he's so sensitive and so caring and so appreciative of other people. And, but it's sensitive in the sense that when he's bullied, uh, it's, it's hurtful. And as a psychiatrist, I know what it's like to be bullied. I've been bullied myself. And, uh, I've probably been a little mean sometimes to people, but, uh, I just adore Rob. And I hope that this is a, a change for the better for him so that he won't have to deal with sewers and, and, uh, and things like that. But he can really pursue his passion. And I really, really, really hope that he will, um, uh, see, see a way forward to work on the village arboretum because it's, it's such a beautiful project and so exciting. And, uh, and I've always thought that, uh, under Rob's leadership, that Pittsburgh could be a model community.
Thank you, Margot. Thank you.
David Marshall, you wanted to speak?
Thank you, Dorothea. I just had a few things written down and, uh, Mayor Corby, thank you from the day I moved here three years ago for being an incredibly welcoming person, um, to new ideas, to, to responding to sometimes, uh, different ideas that weren't necessarily immediately like in line with what you're thinking and being able to explain why you felt some, you know, certain ways about preservation and perspectives, not in a way to belittle or, uh, or to, to change as much as to educate. And, and that strength of character in welcoming new people and bringing them into the fold was really just, uh, just great. And, and I felt from the day I moved here, very welcomed by everybody. And that extends to others as well. Um, another just comment, your unrelenting dedication to the village is inspiring and appreciated. Your long-term vision and understanding of village residents and it went beyond elections. And where we are today is not because you had a four-year plan or an eight-year plan or you were responding, um, to anything, but the long-term vision that you interpreted from residents to create a livable community. And I truly believe that you've succeeded in that. And that's one of the main reasons why we've moved to this village beyond any other in Monroe County. And I guess in closing, just this indelible foundation of preservation and, uh, historic, uh, relevance is, it's just something else to, to live in and to be within, to, and to think that you can do that in this era. Um, and the protection of that over such a long period of time and to work toward it is really inspiring. So thank you for all of your time, your dedication. Truly appreciated.
It's Dave.
Okay, turn it on, turn it off. Uh-oh. Um.
That was interesting.
I would like to speak, Lindsey Graham. Can I be next?
Sure, go ahead.
Turn off. Can anyone hear me? Oh, shoot.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, sorry, I'm sitting next to my, my mom on the back porch, so we're trying not to overstep each other's computer. Um, uh, so I, I would say this extremely rarely and I say it very passionately. Um, probably the only other person I would say this for is, um, for maybe a member of my family, like my mom or dad. But, um, I'm new to the village myself. I've been here three years. And, uh, acceptance is a, is a huge important feeling for, for everybody. And I really felt accepted on a, just, um, a, a really, um, core level. I, I see Rob Corby as somebody who, um, and I wish you could see my video. I can't make it work because this is a new computer, but anyway, um, as, as somebody who, who is just open to everybody and that's huge and it's just genuine. It's, I've never heard him give lip service to it. I've just felt it. And he says hello even to those who treat him badly. And, um, I would take a bullet for, for Bob Corby. And I, I don't really say that very lightly. I, I, I think that he's dedicated his whole life to this village and to the people. And I've never, ever met more pure, unadulterated goodness. And, and I've met zillions of people in my life and tons of good ones. So, um, I think the loss is not his, it's ours. And, um, and, uh, I don't think selfishly for him. Um, I don't, I don't think he sees it as his loss. I think he's the most empathic human I've ever met. And, uh, lip service doesn't cut it. I think it's just actions and he's gonna make them. So I, uh, I think we, we just miss you already. And thank you, and thank you, and thank you, and thank you.
But anyone else like to speak?
Well, if, if, if everybody's spoken, I, there's one group.
Wait.
Renee Hatterham, just.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I wasn't prepared to, to talk tonight and you know, I, I'm not very good at extemporaneous speaking, but I'm gonna try my best here, uh, to keep it short. I would not be in this seat and my family and I would not be living in this village if it weren't for, for Mayor Corby. We share a lens on the importance of walkability and urban planning. And as Dave said it a few minutes ago, um, thank you for being so welcoming. When we, uh, my husband and I called Mayor Corby up when we were considering buying our house and asked him if he could help us restore a bus line so we didn't have to buy a second car. Um, and we got to, to talking about, um, the work that I do with pedestrian safety and, uh, and transportation equity and all of that. And, um, it, he, he welcomed me and my family after that. And I appreciated his openness to, to new ideas, even when we disagreed. So I want to say to you, Mayor Corby, uh, the changing of the guard here does not undo any of the work that you did and, and we appreciate it. And, um, it, it, I, I want you to know that, that your work is, is still here and we, we thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, I'll open it up one more time.
Okay, I, I, this is Bill McBride again. I'd like, there, there is one group in the village that needs someone to speak for them, um, about Bob's contribution. And that's the dogs of the village, okay? Has anybody ever seen any place where dogs walk so happily around the town uh, so comfortably as the village? And Bob, Bob has worked toward that subject. Bob, thank you on behalf of the dogs of the village.
Yeah. Well, I, I just want to say thank you, everybody, tonight. This is pretty amazing. It's been an amazing run working here. And I couldn't have done it without some amazing people along the way, including, um, former clerk Anne Hartzig, treasurer Mary Morowski, Zach Blyer, John Kafari, Dorothea. Um, Steve Loth has been an incredible, um, code enforcement officer. Um, Lily Lanfear has been, uh, an ally for decades and is one of the unsung heroes of our village, uh, working behind the scenes constantly for 17 years on the planning board before she was a trustee. Frank Galusha has been one of the strongest trustees I've ever had on a board. Uh, even under situations of great duress, has, has risen to the challenge. Um, for years, he's managed, uh, the DPW and the financial issues of the village. Um, he's just been an incredible asset to the board. And I want to note tonight that this is also his retirement, which is also a huge loss for the village. Um, he's been just such, um, such an asset of, for, for the village board in the years that he's been. And then all of you, all of you from, um, I can't mention everyone's name, obviously. But the rewarding part has been working with people that really care about the place and the community. And, you know, so the names have changed over the years. Some people have passed away. Some people have moved away. Some great new people have moved in. Uh, but there's been a consistent, um, uh, ethos of, you know, a sense of community and the greater good of, for working towards, towards that. And I think in, in almost all situations, um, that has superseded politics. And if there was anything that was disappointing about the recent elections, it was, it seems like partisan politics has crept down to the village level at a very vitriol, uh, scale. I hope that's not the future and I hope we can go back to the idea of service and making the village better because at the end of the day, in the village, party shouldn't matter. It really is about the mission of preserving our assets and, and leveraging them with new ideas, as has been done on Shane Place and throughout the village over the last few decades. There, I cannot think of another village in the state that's seen the amount of reinvestment, both in our neighborhoods and in our commercial areas that's happened here in the village. And with the imminent redevelopment of the bean mill, um, I think that will be the final piece that will really, um, put us up over the top. So I'm optimistic for the future. I feel honored with the, the naming of the arboretum. Excuse me. That's been one of my long-term, um, goals for almost 20 years is to preserve the, the natural area in the northwest quadrant of the village. And I think as much as anything, that is a huge asset going to the future. A few other communities like us have a, a natural area that large right in the walkable center of the village. So thanks again for everything tonight. And I hope, um, things in the next 28 years go as well as they have in the past 28 years. Thank you, everybody, for this tonight. It means a lot to me. Thank you, everybody, for this tonight. It means a lot to me.
Thank you, Mayor Corby. And with that, I would like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees virtual. Yes, somebody would like to do a virtual. Congratulations to Mayor Corby. Thank you. Thank you. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees accept the proclamation that I read earlier this evening. So moved. Do I have a second to that motion?
I will second Stetser.
Dorothea, would you like to do a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Dorothea? Dorothea?
Yeah.
This is Art. Could I say one last thing?
Sure.
And thank you very much for that courtesy there, Bob. So I think as Lindsey said, Bob, Mr. Mayor, that your personal touch, your empathy has just been summed up by what you have said there in your closing statement. Your recognition of all of the staff, all the other trustees, and it's exemplary, to say the least, as far as a leader, as far as a someone that can be looked up to. And here again, added on top of all your contributions to the community. And including your recognition of Frank and all that he has done for the community. I'd like to thank Frank personally here for his, once again, as well as other trustees. Interest, dedication along the way, whenever myself and my wife had personal questions, comments, concerns about issues relating to the village, once again, so greatly appreciated. I don't know too many communities, and I'm familiar with a lot of communities across this state and others where I've worked, that I hear people talk about and take pride in and are grateful for, here again, the vision, the perseverance, dedication, and all the other accolades along the way. So thank you both. And congratulations, Frank, for all your years of service, as well as Bob. Thanks again.
Can I say something?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Art. Uh, hon?
Hi, Ty.
Hi, uh, hi, everyone. This is I'm Ty. I'm his partner. You have done a great job, an excellent job for the Village of Pittsburgh. And you should be proud of your results. And we have talked about this for a long time. You know, no other village like the Village of Pittsburgh is all due to you, because you have done such an excellent job. And sometimes that the people normally a lot of time, the people in the village call you whether it's day or night, you answer the phone call. And lots of times, to me, is very frustrating because you took care of them before me. So and obviously, it's frustrating. So you put them first, just so you took care of the village. And this is the result of it. So and I know you are a good person. You you don't you didn't mean to do that. However, is I know you love the village. So that's why I tolerated that. And I have loved you for a long time. And in for this many year, I I just go with it with whatever the decision you make. And I know you are a great person. You have a great heart. And everyone loves you in the village, and you you do love everyone in the village. That's all I have to say.
Well, I also want to thank you, Ty, for putting up with us for the last, I don't know how many years it's been, but a long, long time. And and Ty has been a martyr tolerating, even when I'm in Las Vegas, with the interruptions because of the village. And he's been just a saint in doing that. So I couldn't have done this without you, Ty, most of all. So thank you.
Oh, stand here, hon.
I think I have. I think I got to add in Lindsey here real quick. Permission to speak fast. First of all, yes, that's that's, I think that that you just nailed it, Ty. And thank you for speaking. Yeah, talk about somebody who who puts puts their community first, that it's unparalleled dedication. And and God bless you, Ty, for for being the second man to that. So I I love you both so much. I love this village so much. I and and so I can't, I will not end without saying thank you, Frank Galusha. Because even though, you know, the mayor leaving at the same time as you are, kind of overshadows, but but not a minute goes by when when we're not so grateful for you, Frank. And
Well said.
I see Rob nodding big time, but or Bob nodding big time. But yeah, you are so hugely appreciated. And and I'm sure I don't say it enough. So that means nobody says it enough. So I'm glad glad to add that as 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 my one last thing.
Okay, all right. Thank you, everyone. I guess move on to the agenda now. All right. Item we have is the DPW report.
How do you like following that, Zach?
Yeah, I've been dreading this since the start of this meeting. Now I have to ask for for money. Be as brief as possible. So I got a quote for a new Kubota RTV, which is a vehicle similar to the tool cat. And it does not have quite the same amount of functionality. It's more light duty than the tool cat. And with our growing staff down at the DPW, we have run into situations in the past where it's been difficult to get everybody around to the jobs that have to be done. Sometimes people are left walking back and forth if it's close enough to the shop to to get stuff or, you know. So I got a quote, this is off a New York State contract for the Kubota. It is $19,000. This could be purchased off of the money available through the CHIPS fund. And it would be painful through that. So it wouldn't it wouldn't be anything out of the budget for this year or coming up for 21 22. So I am pleased to ask for your permission to purchase this vehicle.
If I can interrupt, Zach, we've got a picture of this new GPW vehicle. Dorothea, do you want to share that?
Yep, give me one second.
No, maybe it's not going to work.
No, it's going to work. There you go.
And that's it. That's the that's the 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 new vehicle that our GPW will be using. It's the the total cost, $22,777. We 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 did get a state discount of $5,000. But it's going to be a useful vehicle. Zach, did you want to add any more about about what we're going to use this vehicle for?
This will be mostly used for parts-related work. If we can get it to the point where one person's pulling the trailer around with the mower and concentrating on doweling up all the parts. We're going to put the water tank in the back of it and use it for watering. And a different crew member is going to be running it for that, just depending on who's available at that time. But mostly Sophie, this is going to be a Sophie vehicle. And it's 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 not going to be beat up like the tool cat because we're not going to get the plow package for it, despite what the picture shows. Unfortunately, the plow that would be equipped with it is six feet wide, which is much too wide for a silo. And yeah, so it's just a very useful piece of equipment with a dump body and a lot of versatility. And in in a cheapish, easy means to be able to get everybody around to work.
So the final sale price is going to be $19,107. And as as Zach said, it's going to come out of state funding that we've received. So I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the purchase of this new DPW vehicle.
Removed. We have a second.
Lanfear, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Sure. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Can I follow that up?
Very much.
I have a question after we're done, Mary.
Okay, I would just like to follow that up with having a motion to make the necessary budget line items increased for the reflection of the new Kubota for the $19,000, both in 5110.1 and in 3501 with CHIPS.
Removed. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Mary, question for you. How much is left after that on the CHIPS funding?
$3,500.
Okay, thanks.
We should get a new allotment with the new fiscal year coming out for the state. April 1, we probably will hear about those monies mid-April. Should be around another 21, which the monies from that budget will be designated into the new fiscal year budget for South Street Design.
Ready for roll call?
Yes, go ahead.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else, Zach?
Oh, can I, Zach, real quick?
Go ahead, go ahead, Renee. Yeah.
You said that that we won't have the plow on the front because that's going to be too wide for our sidewalk. So we have, I know one of the vehicles that we were using to plow in the winter is not has not been doing so well. So we do we just have one still that can handle the plowing or?
No, we're going to do the tool cat along with the T450, the Bobcat that we just purchased.
Yeah.
It'll be the two of them together again this coming winter. And we are, I believe it is in the budget for the floor plant floor pan placement on the the tool cat. So outside of that, any issues that come up with the tool cat, we should be able to address and let it through for another year or so.
Okay, great. I like that new one. Yeah, the new one does a great job.
Yeah.
Does, it does. Okay, anything else, Zach?
Um, no, that's all I got. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, let's move on to the treasurer's report.
Brooklyn will be giving that tonight.
You're on, Brooklyn. Yep. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you, Mayor Corby. Vouchers, we, thank you, thank you. We are on abstract 19 this week. We have 30 vouchers totaling $25,061.92. There are, there are a few I want to bring to attention. Voucher 501, totaling $4,460. We do have an insurance reimbursement coming back to us for that. So that will be reimbursed on that one. And for trustee Galusha, I know you were questioning 506, the Monroe tractor. And we do have a write-up done for you for that. So whenever you're ready, we'll get that over to you. Good.
That's it. We just need a motion to approve.
Yeah, Brooklyn, the pole, that light pole was the one that was taken out by the the driver in the summer.
Correct.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Removed. Do we have a second? We have a second.
A second. Thank you. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Mary, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it for me. Just a reminder, we do have some outstanding attorney bills that do need to be paid. I didn't include them in this abstract, but I will put them in again for next abstract so we can get the necessary processes cleared. That would be awesome. That's it for me. Thank you.
Regular board meeting, February 16. Does anyone have any corrections for the meetings from February 16? Is that a no?
No corrections on that.
I didn't have the time. I didn't have time to read any of the notes. So I'm just going to stay on on them when it comes time for the votes.
Okay.
Okay, all right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 16, 2021. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Dana, note you're abstaining. And trustee Galusha? Frank, you're muted.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Village Board meeting, February 17.
No additions or changes.
It was a short, short meeting. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Lanfear, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Keating, trustee Keating, you're abstaining. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
February 23.
I have two things on the second page of the of the minutes. Under member items, it says a small, I mean, crap, now I've lost it. Hold on a second. Talking about about midway through that paragraph, trustee Stetser further explained that the village had a small budget for this project. And we're not talking about a project because this is legislation to just take out for this project. I remember the the statement. It was just that we, in general, have a small, small budget. And then the second, on the second page there, or right after it, I'm sorry, that's the third page, Assemblywoman Burns, should be spelled B Y R N E S instead of Burns.
Well, correct. Thank you.
All right, Groovy. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second. Stetser.
Okay, Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating abstaining. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Minutes, March 9, 2021.
I have a small correction on the third page toward the the bottom. It says trustee stated that it should say if instead of is. It's not a tragedy if it stays that way, but.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March ninth. Do I have a second? Is there a second?
Stetser, second.
Lanfear, second.
Okay.
I wait for you, Renee.
I know, I didn't know you were going to be seconding all night.
Everybody jump in there. Okay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating's abstaining. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Lastly, the minutes of March tenth, two thousand twenty-one. These are pretty short. I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Stetser, second.
Second. Okay, all right.
Renee got your point.
Give it to Frank.
Would you call a vote, please?
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating abstains. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much.
Okay, the next item we have is Jeff Turner here to talk about the short-term retail business law.
I am. It's pretty self-explanatory. It really mirrors the transient merchant, but it leaves the power with the Board of Trustees rather than that discretion with the clerk. Are there any questions? Steve and I can deal with them.
Any comments?
Steve has his hand raised.
Yep, go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, the only thing I want to ask in regards to this, because there is no fee for the application right now. I don't know how the board felt about that. It does take some administrative time. So, I didn't know if we should maybe add a fifty-dollar application fee for that or twenty-five dollars, just something to cover administrative time to process and take care of it. That makes sense. It really does make sense.
Yeah. Yes. Had we ever discussed, I'm sorry, this is trustee Lanfear, had we ever discussed any other kind of fees since the short-term businesses are doing their business without paying taxes as permanent businesses or, you know, brick and mortar businesses do in the village? And they're doing business and they're bringing in revenue, but they're not. Have we talked about that at all? Is that part of this?
Yeah, Lily, what, what part of this will be is there would be an application fee. There is, what I'm proposing, or Jeff and I propose, a single use of fifty dollars. So, one day permit of fifty dollars, a hundred dollars per month for, like Charlie. That's what the town charges Charlie for the use of that space. I think, I believe if we did the same thing, so if it's a one-time thing, it's fifty dollars. At the first of the month, if you're there a month, you pay a hundred dollars. The first, the next month, you'd pay another hundred, just like the town charges for the use of their space.
Okay, thank you.
And the logic, the logic of doing that instead of the tax is it eliminates the accounting nightmare that the village office would have to do here. Not nightmare, but it's just a more cumbersome process to check the books, get the sales records, and then compute the tax. And I think, Steve, isn't that similar to what, what Harlady Hots ended up paying last year in terms of the tax under the other code? Yeah, by the time we're all sudden done, I think he ends up maybe paying a hundred and ten more this year this way. But that's really not that bad, you know? I mean, he, Charlie was fine with that.
Okay, Mayor Corby, Justin Belisha requested to speak to the board regarding this issue.
Okay.
Justin, go ahead.
Yes, I had quite a few concerns with this, and I hear Mr. Harlady being mentioned, but he wouldn't be eligible for this as written because it's not on private property where he operates. This, I think this has some really substantial conflicts with both the comprehensive plan, and I think it may also have conflicts with state law. I would like to defer some discussion of this and maybe open up a larger discussion to temporary permits in general, and maybe a larger discussion of how all of them can be handled. And I think I would appreciate the planning board and zoning board could be included on that conversation.
Jeff?
I'm in from the board.
It's, I can speak to the, whether or not this applies to the Harlady Hots. That is private property. It's not municipally owned property. It's owned by the town, but it's operated as a private property. They don't, they don't operate it as a municipal use. So, to that extent, it's private property.
Okay.
And here's the issue, if we, you know, we ran into this last year trying to figure out how to allow Charlie to come in. Somebody who's been in this village for many years and served the village and done a great job for the residents. If we table this and don't take care of this, Charlie's coming on his way back up. In fact, we were transferring papers while he was driving in South Carolina, trying to make sure that this, this was taken care of in a timely manner because it needs to go to public hearing. And if this does not get resolved, we have another thirty days. Charlie typically operates, starts operating on May first. And if this doesn't get resolved and taken care of, he will not be able to start his business as normal again. We, you know, we'll be running into an issue of allowing him to start. And if we table this and wait till next month, he would probably not, we'd have to hold special meetings or do something, and then maybe not getting him until mid-May, end of May, or June.
Wouldn't, this is trustee Lanfear, wouldn't the process be for us to move this to public hearing and have any discussion regarding its merits or changes during that public hearing?
This, this, the thing is, what the plan or the thought was to have the, the law, kind of like we did with the last set, the law would get, go to public hearing next month, right after it got approved, if it got approved, we could do modifications or adjust it as, as the board would see fit. You would approve it, and right after that, you would have the public hearing for Charlie. He has put an application that's in front of the board tonight. So, that also would be able to be moved to public hearing for next month.
Okay.
What is, Justin, are you still there?
I'm still here. There's a enormous problem with this law in that it applies to residential property. And that's where it, I see it has a serious conflict with the comprehensive plan, which calls for preservation of our residential properties, but it doesn't call for commercial operation on residential properties. So, it also conflicts with some other local codes on temporary permits. So, what, we've had some discussion of temporary permits for quite a while. And the, what I've advocated for is to not leave this open-ended thing where anything goes anywhere if a board can approve it. Instead, to list the types of uses that it can be approved and to specify where they can be approved. In commercial districts, it makes sense to have some freedom, but I don't know why the uses wouldn't be allowed outright in a commercial district. In a residential district, commercial uses are really not appropriate. Some examples of some things that come up that are somewhat commercial are things like the farmer's market. That's an example of something that could be specifically called out as that type of thing is allowed. We have temporary events that are open to the public and don't charge admission. That could be things like the car shows and stuff like that. Those are examples of things that could be specifically defined and called out. But having a law that says anything goes anywhere is for commercial uses is extremely dangerous. I see Marge's Bar that's over on, on the lake, for example. I don't think most residents would like to have something like that approved right in the middle of the block, for example. I'm not saying anyone would, but having this in residential districts, I see as problematic.
Can you respond to that, Jeff?
Can I speak to that? The, here's the issue. Where Charlie is, where Charlie is, is a residential district. It's limited office residential. That's, that's the whole purpose doing this is giving the board discretion on where these things are allowed or not. Second thing is, I love Marge's. I'll tell you, Marge is a great place for entertainment. You feel like you're in Florida. Third thing I got to say, because I didn't speak up earlier, I want to thank Frank. It's your fault I'm here for contacting me and getting me back in, into the village. But I do want to thank you. You're most gracious in getting ahold of me and getting me to come back to this village. And thank Bob for taking me in under his wing and, and teaching me some things about preservation and history and the importance of those things that I had no knowledge of before I came to this village. So, I thank both of you for, for bringing me here. It's been a great experience so far, and I really appreciate what you did.
Well, I'm glad you're here, Steve. You've been a great asset, so we're glad you're here, too.
Anyway, I would echo, I would echo Steve's thoughts that, that the, there's protections built into the considerations required by this board before the board could ever grant one of these permits. I think the reason, Steve and I talked about this, and this is obviously not anything that's up to Steve or me, but we talked a little bit about the residential versus not residential. And we thought about somebody who want to have a food truck for a graduation party or something like that. The trustees could allow that, but deny a, for instance, a bar in a residential neighborhood because it just wouldn't fit within the parameters that are laid out in the code. So, that, that was our thinking. But obviously, all of those issues are up to the trustees to decide what they want to do with this.
If I may chime in a little slightly once again, I know we discussed this in some of our code reviews previously. Food trucks for a birthday party are not something that needs a permit. That's an accessory use of residential structure. You having a birthday party, I think we had a discussion about permits for birthday parties a few years ago for music or something like that. And I think it was generally agreed that that type of thing is really not needed and intrusive. So, simple little one-day events that people have at their own private property normally don't get permits. But they're not fundraisers. They're not raising money. They're just trying to, you know, have a party. So, and the zoning where Harlady Hots is, I've always agreed that's problematic. Why should we allow food, food trucks operating all summer long on a residential property? If you want to change the zoning on it so it's not residential, that could make sense. We've been, always come up with findings for it for that particular area. It makes sense for that particular area. I don't know why that particular area is zoned residential, but it is. So.
It's actually, Justin, it's, it's a mixed-use zone. It's office residential. And the fact is, all those houses now have become strictly offices, and the residential uses have been extinguished. So, primarily, it's an office district, but it isn't, it's unlike any other residential district in the village because it really is a mixed-use district and has become really an office district.
My suggestion for trying to get something in place for Harlady Hots, if the board is interested in doing so, would be to continue your current provisions under the COVID to allow temporary outdoor dining permits to be administratively approved by Steve. I think that provided a lot of relief to a lot of our restaurants, and we don't know how much longer that's going to impact them. But I think that was a, a good proposal that was in place last year, and it makes sense to continue it.
The only issue there, Justin, would be if they list, lift, for some reason, lift all the restrictions, then, then that would become invalid.
Yeah. Jeff?
Comments from the board?
Oh.
Go ahead, Renee.
Jeff and Steve, I guess, is there a way that we can move this forward, like, you know, so that we don't hold up Harlady Hots? Is there a way to move this to public hearing and, and allow us some time to address some of the concerns about what the planning board has brought up? And have more discussion on this if we, as long as it's not more restrictive, right? We can, we can do that, or how does it work?
Yeah, you can certainly, you can certainly downline any, any law ordinance, any of that stuff can be modified. But, you know, I mean, and you have to go through the same process. It's a time process. It's getting it, you know, properly done. So, yes, could it be adjusted later on needs of the planning board or if others on the board felt like things should be moved? But for now, this is a very good start. It allows us to move forward and gives the Board of Trustees a control over this function versus the last one was up to the clerk. You know, our transversion was up to the village clerk, not, not the board. So, I would, I would say to answer Renee's question, yes, it can be moved to public hearing. You can adopt it tonight, anyway. One of the problems, though, is that what I'm hearing would be resolved in a more restrictive document, which you could not then adopt that night if you made it more restrictive that night.
And the, and the other option that, Justin's idea of extending the COVID relief, is there a way to write it so that even if the state, even if the state restrictions are lifted, that our village restrictions would supersede that?
We would, well, it's all based on that. You could, you could do an outside seating ordinance. I mean, but you, you made it as a temporary permit, and the basis of that resolution was the pandemic. And it doesn't really clearly apply to Harlady Hots anyway. You would have to change it in that way.
Right.
Yeah, but how do you charge them? I mean, we, it was under the transient merchant permit that we were able to do the tax thing and, and to do something. If we take this off the books, I mean, it, it's basically just saying, Charlie, go ahead. And we really have no, you know what I mean? I mean, I don't really care. I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me here, but it, to the village, it's, you know, he's, you know, the village should gain something out of his game. That's my thought.
We still have temporary permits on the books.
Bob, Dave Marshall requested to speak. He was waving his hand.
Go ahead, Dave. Go ahead.
Thank you. Could it not simply be approved by the clerk as it's currently written?
No.
No?
We removed, we removed the transient merchant law last year because it was too open-ended. It basically was a carte blanche free-for-all.
I wasn't aware it was removed. Thank you.
That's not precisely the reason what was, was removed. It was giving discretionary authority to a position that doesn't really have it.
Right. It put the clerk in an awkward position with authority that really doesn't make sense for an administrative official. There's always, I mean, the law can always be amended if, if we feel there's problems. But why don't we move ahead with it just so we give Charlie an option to start up? And then if we want to rethink the law, the board can always do that in the future. What's the harm in that? I don't see any.
Trustee Lanfear, I would like to make a motion that we move, set a public hearing for local, for local law. I don't have the number in front of me. I apologize.
It would be for local law. Yep, it'll be April twenty-seventh at seven PM.
So, moved.
I'll, I'll second that discussion. If there is none, then I would ask Rotheria to call a, do a roll call vote.
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Keating stepped away. Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
Okay.
Second, the next. Second part of that motion also is to, uh, set a public hearing for the permit for Holiday Hots.
I'll make that motion.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'm ready.
I'll make the motion and Renee wants to second it. How's that?
All right.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Uh, Mayor Corby, before we move on, there's a young woman who'd like to say a few words regarding you, Maria Vannett. If you're there, you can go ahead.
Hi Maria.
Hi, thank you so much, Dorothee. I was having technical difficulties earlier, so I appreciate this opportunity. Rob, I just want to say thank you so much, as everyone else has had to say tonight, for preserving our beautiful village and it's wonderful to have grown up here and now to see it and it's still the same, just as beautiful and spectacular as ever. And that has been built upon, the changes that have been made have just added to its beauty. You are a friend to everyone. We all think that you are our best friend and I'm sure you're my best friend. It's going to be wonderful to continue to pass you on the street and still have you be such a big part of this village. And I can't wait to see what path you're going to blaze for yourself next. And may your next 28 years be just as productive as the last 28 beautiful years you have given to us. And thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Maria. And for everybody else, Maria and I went to high school together and spent a lot of time together in high school. So thank you Maria, that means a lot. Okay, um, next item we have is a non-municipal use permit for the Little League Parade.
I don't believe anyone is present for the Little League, but we'll give it a second here. If not, I'll present for them.
Okay.
Doesn't look like it, so yes, this is the normal parade that happens every year. It's looking like Saturday, May 1st from Sutherland High School to Lincoln Avenue. And they provided their insurance information and.
So the only difference is it'll be a driving parade instead of a walk-in parade?
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application. Do I have a second?
Lamphier, second. I assume that we're within the 45 day window. I can't count that from March, April.
How about we waive it just on the safe side since math isn't my strong point at the moment?
Okay. So first I will make the motion that waive the 45 day requirement.
We can combine them.
Combine them and also approve the non-municipal use permit for the Little League Parade.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you Frank, thank you Frank. Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Yes, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Um, I don't see Dan, so I'm going to go to trustee Galusha.
He's, he's there.
Here, um, Steve has his hand up. Does Steve need to say something before we vote?
Did you have a comment Steve? After this is done, the next, I gotta say something when this is done.
Okay. My vote is aye.
Okay, trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Okay, next we have Corn Hill Navigation, this is for the sand patch.
And Steve wanted, Steve wanted to say something before we go there. Go ahead Steve.
Okay.
We, we forgot something, the fees. We forgot to make a motion for the fee for $50 for the application to add a fee of $50 for a one-time event and a hundred dollars per month for the, um, temporary retail permit.
I would make that motion, do I have a second?
Lamphier, second.
Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so back to the Corn Hill Navigation for the sand patch. Looks like their typical permit every year. We will follow up, make sure we have all the insurance, insurance information and everything else we need for the application when it's approved.
Thank you, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Corn Hill Navigation application for, um, the 20, would it be 20, 21 season?
I'll second that. Dorothea, would you call a vote?
Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Okay, next item we have is the appointment of Mary Morowski and extension of her position as treasurer. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will make that motion. Would we like to clarify the reason why, uh, the extension is being requested?
Yes.
Dorothea, would you like to speak to that?
Um, if Mayor Corby requests, I do, I will.
Yes, please, please Dorothea.
Um, I would request that we extend Mary at least until June 1st. Um, a little longer would be appreciated. Even if we can go to September 1st, we need to finish up the budget process and get the tax season in the books. She's still bringing Brooklyn up to speed and we still need her in the office to help conclude these items. So that is the need for extending her term.
I will make that motion in that case, trustee, uh, trustee Lamphier.
To what timeframe?
Till the June 1st, was that the date that you, that you felt that she could?
September would be preferable, June would be the minimal I would need her.
Ah, okay.
I think for September.
Oh, okay. Well, all right, well then, that's the motion that I will make.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll second that. Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
What, um, does that match what we had in the budget?
It is in the budget. We have the money set aside for her for 10 hours a week to continue for a while.
Okay.
In case needed. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Uh, trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Real quick, before I don't get a chance, I do also want to thank Bob for everything, for appointing me to this position, um, introducing me to a new village family. And I, we always be grateful for the time I've had to serve you and trustee Galusha. You have been outstanding and Frank, if I haven't gotten through a virtual meeting and said, Frank, you need unmute, it isn't a meeting and thank you so much for everything. You bring many laughs and tears and I'm going to miss you both. Thank you.
Dorothea, you've been a fantastic clerk and, uh, but it, what a, what, what a, a find to find you, uh, to run the office. Uh, you're, you're just an amazing person and an amazing man. So thank you for everything you've done and thank you for all the help that you've given me over the years that you've been here. I couldn't have done any of this without you. Um, and I mean that sincerely. Uh, next item, we have some board appoint.
Can I jump in just for a second? Can I jump in for a second? I just want to say thank you for allowing me to stay on to help Brooklyn along for the next few months. Hopefully we'll get him up to speed and then the transition for me can take place. I can actually really retire. Um, but I also would like to thank you Bob and Frank. You have been my two main men throughout all of these years and 22 almost with the two of us, Bob. Um, we've been through a lot and you've, like I said, you've been my right-hand men. I've learned a lot from each of you and I appreciated you taking me on as a, and giving me a chance as the treasurer for the village. Thank you again, both of you.
You've been solid as a rock the entire time you're here. Uh, I can't think of any worse crises that we could have thrown at you that you've managed effectively through, through everything, through thin and thin, through multiple lawsuits from 75 Monroe. Somehow we've woven our way out of a fiscal nightmare into a place where once again, uh, the village is on a solid financial footing and none of that would have happened, Mary, without your expert guidance. So on behalf of myself and also Frank, I'm sure, thank you for everything that you've done. I, um, again, you're just an amazing individual. I'll miss you every day in the office, uh, your, your, your humor, your smiles. Uh, it's just a joy to work with you.
Thank you Bob, thank you Frank.
Thank you.
Um, Bob, Ms. Shaw would like to speak.
Sure. Hi Suzanne.
I just want to say you'll always be the mayor of Pittsburgh to me. I'm down in St. Augustine, Florida, and I couldn't miss this and wanted to say the best of luck to you.
Well, thank you Suzanne. Now I won't have any excuses for missing those historic Pittsburgh meetings and I would love to see you there at them.
I love you Bob Corby and I'm glad we lived in the same place together.
Me too, me too Suzanne. Can't wait to see you back here in Pittsburgh.
I'll be back, bye-bye.
Bye.
Thank you Dorothea.
Okay. Um, okay, so we have some board appointments first with the HBV. Um, is Lisa Cove on tonight or?
Yes, I am on.
Do you want to introduce the, the, um, the new board member appointment? And I talked to Bill McBride Lisa and he also suggested, he wasn't sure if we made a, an appointment for Maria Hewitt as the alternate, if that was ever officially done, so to make sure, we're going to do that tonight as well.
Okay. Uh, yes, I think.
I'll start with Maria Hewitt, I'm, I'm just going to start with Maria Hewitt. And, uh, I'll make an appointment for Maria Hewitt as the alternate, which is a five-year term. Do I have a second?
I second it, Lisa Cove.
Do we have, do we need?
It's going to be a village, village board member has to second it.
Do, uh, can I, may I have a clarification process please? The trustee Lamphier. Is this a mayoral appointment and does not require board approval? Or is this a, a, a different process because you're putting an alternate in place? I just like that clarified.
The alternate, if, it's, it's, it's an, there's nobody in there, it's a vacant position, so it would require board approval.
Thank you, thank you. In that case, yes, I will second the, uh, the, um, approval of Maria Hewitt as an alternate to the HBV.
Okay. Dorothea, would you call a vote please?
Yes, trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lamphier?
Lamphier, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Trustee Keating, no.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now Lisa, if you would introduce the, the new candidate for, uh, for, for the Historic Preservation Board?
Yes, hi. Um, Jeff is on with us tonight and Jeff has been so kind to be with us for the last two, actually almost three, uh, HBV meetings. Um, he actually came to me, uh, Jeff's wife sat on the WXXI board with me. She shared the WXXI board with me and, um, gave me a call and said that Jeff was really interested in, in serving on the Village of Pittsburgh Preservation Board as he has had quite the experience and, and, uh, in, in preservation in the past, being involved with, um, the Landmark Society and some other preservation work. I think you all did get his resume, I'm hoping. But I think that Jeff is going to be a wonderful asset to the Village Preservation Board. His, he's, he's retired from his full-time job, so he has time to spend, um, kind of getting to know the village a little bit more and working with us and, uh, doing some great work. So I would like to nominate him to be a HBV member.
Uh, can we ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, I, uh, this resume looks fantastic and I have no issues with this candidate or with the, the, um, authority of the mayor to appoint. Uh, I would, I've stated this before, I would like to, to see that these open board positions are advertised on our Facebook page and our newsletter and our website. These, these are an opportunity to engage with our community and to educate our residents about the work that these citizens, uh, these citizen volunteers do and to alert residents who might be interested in applying to be on one of our boards. And, um, I know that the HBV is very, um, you know, these requirements are, are very specific because you ideally need an architect and, and, um, someone with, with, um, historic preservation experience. So you may not get any qualified candidates from this process, but, but we've engaged with the community this way and provided an opportunity for dialogue. And, um, though people may not be a good fit for the, uh, specific board positions, they may be great for our next comprehensive plan update steering committee or other initiatives that we undertake that rely on, um, uh, community engagement. So I am, it sounds like this, um, the Historic Preservation Board was engaged in the conversations here. I, I just want to underscore the, the, that I believe we should advertise these and I would like to see that. Um, so if we could hold, I don't know how important it is, um, to get this filled tonight, but if we, my desire is to just see this advertised a little bit to engage our community.
We've had the position open for months, um, and looking for somebody that's qualified. I think we finally found one, um, in the metropolitan area of Rochester. There's less than a handful of people that really have these qualifications that Jeffrey does. I think this is a unique opportunity to put somebody that's qualified in the field on our board and continue the professionalism that really has been the hallmark of the HBV since it was founded in 1971.
Great, um, I'd like to jump in. So I, I want to underscore what Renee said and that's why I voted no on the prior one. Um, Jeffrey, this is no offense to you, this is just a, your, your resume is fantastic. Uh, this is just a process and transparency thing. You know, we talked about this on February 23rd at the trustees meeting and, um, Renee and me and, and Frank even agreed as well that for future open board positions, we publicize them and be transparent and hopefully attract some good candidates. We also talked about this and agreed on this when Dave Marshall was appointed to the PCBA. And so, um, it, it shouldn't be so hard for us to follow. So I, that's why I'm voting no, I wanted that on the record. Has nothing to do with your qualifications Jeffrey and, and to the other candidate whose name I can't remember, I'm sorry.
Maria Hewitt was already.
Maria, thank you. So apologies to Maria, same, same reason there for Maria, she's a terrific candidate and, uh, hoping for transparency.
Well, given the things that you said about me, no, excuse me, I'm speaking. Given the things that you said about me in the recent election, the lies that you put forth on the internet about me, Dan, I don't see any transparency there. So I think that statement you just made is completely hypocritical.
This is a mayoral appointment, it does not require board approval, is that correct? Or not, is this a?
Requires board approval.
Thank you, that's why I'd like to have that clarified, thank you.
Um, this is, this is Lisa, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so, so I guess my question for both Renee and Dan is, is that we do have this, um, this board seat empty. It's been empty for a couple of months. Um, what, what do you foresee the process of like, what's the time period? What do we do as far as what, what your thoughts are to fill positions from now on? I mean, is it where we put a email blast out to the residents and say that this is open? And then who does the interviewing and, and who makes the final selection? I guess, I guess I'm just kind of interested, is there a process set up already? Or is this something that we have to start now, um, before we can fill the seat in your, in your?
Under village law, there's only one process that's legal in New York State. And that's for the mayor to make appointments, which is what is happening tonight.
Uh, to, to answer, uh, your, your question Lisa, I think before when we talked about it, it was simply just putting it out on our, I think with, um, the last time we advertised it, it was, we even gave it a short deadline of about two weeks and we didn't get any, um, additional qualified candidates. It was just about the process and making sure that the, the community was included. That's all, that's all it was.
Okay, so what, so did it go out on the village website and how, how? Okay. So what, so did it go out on the village website? And how, how did it get dispersed to people?
Was it, this is when we were filling a PBZ. I think we've only done it once, but I can't remember. It was right after, um, maybe a year ago, and we put it up for two weeks and we didn't get any additional candidates. We put it up on the village website and sent it out, um, in the newsletter, I think. If someone can help me out here, I believe we've only done this once where we advertised it. Um, but similar to what the, what the town does. And again, we, I, I, this has nothing to do with the candidate. It's about.
I totally, yeah, yeah, I totally understand. I just, you know, it.
And I know you need somebody on the board too.
Right, that's, that's. And, and like I said, we've, uh, both Mayor Corby and myself have interviewed Jeff, and you know, his resume is, is wonderful. He's got great experience and he's so very excited and, and willing to donate in his, or volunteer his time to this. Um, so I guess, so Bob, you're telling me that it's, it's, it, this is the only legal way to go is for mayor appointment? And then Renee and Dan?
All appointments are mayoral appointments. There's, you know, I normally consulted with the chairs of the boards, which I've done in the case with all the appointments proposed tonight. I think there's no reason not to go ahead with this. Um, there's going to be some applications coming in the HBV, which will need assistance from somebody. And I think having Jeffrey's expertise on the board is going to only help out the board do a, a, a good job in reviewing applications.
And so I.
Oh, sorry.
It is okay. Is, is the lawyer on with us? Is your lawyer on? I mean, I guess, if this is a legal thing, I, I just don't understand. Um, moving forward after Mayor Corby leaves, I mean, how do you foresee this happening? Is it going to still be a mayoral appointment? Is it going to be something where we put a process in that has to be followed, where we list this, the available point, available spots? I mean, I.
That's what I would like to see going forward. I don't think we, we're doubting the mayoral, um, appointment authority. It's the, um, it's just, it's asking for an internal process of, um, making sure that this is advertised. That's it. Um, before, so that it gives an opportunity for people who may not know about it, and it also engages the community a little bit. And we always learn about some new people who might want to participate in, in some of the things going on at Village Hall. So I also recognize your need to, to fill this position immediately, and it, it shouldn't, um, I don't want to get in the middle of that. I would like to express my desire again that going forward, we advertise these positions.
Okay. That's, that's totally understandable. So do we go forward and, and put a vote in to see if this can be approved?
There's, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second on my motion?
Lanfair, a second.
Is there a second for the motion?
Lanfair, second.
Would you call a vote, please? Yes, thank you.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, no.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye. Motion carries. And lastly, we have a nomination for the planning board. Uh, John. Does he have his last name handy? I don't have the resume.
Kichakura.
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 Yep, Kichakura.
Is Justin Felista on the phone?
I, I am here.
Justin, um, have you been consulted on this as the board chair?
Um, I had a phone call from Mayor Corby this morning. Um, I expressed significant concerns, um, about this. Again, I was hoping a process could be followed. Um, I believe we were talking about the same matter a month and a half ago, and this entire board promised, next time an opening came up, we'd consult with the planning board and advertise the position. Um, I haven't really been consulted on this, other than being told this was happening tonight. I heard Lisa state that she interviewed the candidate with Mayor Corby. I haven't had that opportunity with this applicant. Um, I don't know this applicant. I, this was just something this morning. I heard, um, Justin Lightgib last week, he sent me an email saying, I know this person, I talked to him while, on the campaign trail, I think he'd be a good candidate. And I suggested that, um, he forwarded him on to, um, the, the new mayor, Ms. Plummer. Uh, because I presumed this would be handled during their administration, and, um, encouraged them to talk. So I don't know what is going on with this, but, um, you know, again, this seems very rushed. And I don't mean any disrespect or anything to the applicant, but I think it makes sense to have a process, as was, um, stated. And I've asked that, if we can provide a mechanism where members of the board that they're going to serve on have an opportunity to at least provide feedback on eligible candidates. I do realize it's the mayor's appointment. Um, they can ignore the feedback. They can do what they want to do. They don't, they're not required to solicit feedback. But again, um, I think it makes sense to have good, well-functioning boards to serve our residents. Um, and, uh, some of that starts with a good vetting process and good communication.
Hey. Thoughts from the board?
I'd like to, uh, table this one if we can, so that the planning board has time to be involved. It sounds like Lisa and the Historic Preservation Board were involved in the last process, which is why I voted yes, in spite of the, the, it not being advertised, because at least the, the Historic Preservation Board was included. This sounds like Justin is not, uh, hasn't been consulted, and he's not quite comfortable. Um, so I would like to, uh, table this until we can advertise it and the planning board can be consulted.
And any other thoughts from board members?
You know, that's, this is trustee Lanfair. That is an interesting concept regarding all of the planning board members reviewing or, or, uh, it's, in all the years that I've been involved, that has never occurred. That's not saying it's correct. I'm just saying it has always been a mayoral appointment and decision. And sometimes, uh, involved interviews by the board chairs, but not many in, in my memory. I don't know why that is, but it always has been. And I'm going to reiterate, not to say that it is the correct way, or there is not a better way to handle it. But I'm going to say that I have read this application. He is a village resident. He is an attorney, which I think is always helpful, uh, on, on a board, and seems to be qualified. So I do believe that we had received applications or interest in the past, uh, several months, let's call it six months. And there weren't any, any applications from anyone who was, had any, any qualifications. So to receive this now, I don't know why, without a compelling reason besides a desire for a board without any history of having done so in the past, to have input on a, on a, uh, potential board member is a complete change, and also not in accordance with state law, which gives that power to the mayor. So it sounds to me, it's almost like circumventing the mayoral power. And for that reason, as well as many others, I'm sure you, uh, will understand that I respect the mayor's opinions, and I would support his appointment. Thank you.
Um, to Renee's, to follow up on Renee's point, Renee just, um, very clearly said that this is not to circumvent the mayoral, mayor's, um, legal right. It is about transparency and engagement. And, um, I did not see a resume on this. I saw a screenshot of a LinkedIn profile, and that's not the same. So Lily, you said you saw a resume of this candidate.
Well, that's the one I was referring to. I called it the resume.
Okay, that, yeah, to set the record straight, that's not a resume. That's a
Okay.
screenshot of a social media profile. So, um, yeah, same story as the other, other ones. We, we've talked about this, now we've talked about this three or four times. We've all agreed, we've been over and over this, that the right way to do this is to try and engage the community and be open and transparent. But if you don't want to do that, so be it.
Um, if I was to chime in, I have had, the, the planning board has been given opportunities in the past to comment on candidates. Um, I know this happened with Mr. Lightgib when he ran. Um, the mayor informed the board that we were, um, he was considering that it was an appointment, and we were able to give feedback to the mayor. Um, the same thing happened, I believe, with Eli Bannister. Um, this was mentioned, and I believe also with Dave Marshall. I believe the board was generally aware that this was pending and had at least a week or so where if we wanted to schedule a appointment to talk to the person or so on, and we could talk amongst each other. Right now, we have two months where I've been informed the morning of the meeting that someone is being proposed to be put on the board. Um, this is my notification from the mayor. And the last time I had to call the mayor, it just appeared on the agenda. Um, I think we can have better processes to do this. Um, I, I will end my comments here. Thank you.
I just point out that Justin had no other recommendation, so I would like to move ahead with this appointment. I think John is uniquely qualified. Uh, an attorney is one of the recommended professional occupations that, um, the American Planning Association recommends for, um, a position on a planning board. Obviously, there's obvious, um, having a legal mind has a great benefit, uh, in terms of informing the discussion among the members of the board. And, uh, having gotten to know John, um, he has a, a genuine understanding of what's unique about the village with the combination of a legal background. So I'll make that motion to approve the appointment. Is there a second?
I will second that motion. Trustee Galusha.
Okay. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, no.
Trustee Galusha.
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, aye.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, no.
Mayor Corby.
Corby, aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next item we have is the home rule legislation for the amended speed limit legislation.
So we, uh, that is my item on here, and we had hoped to have the, a, a new resolution, but we don't yet have the assembly updated bill number. So I just wanted to give you all, um, a quick update on the speed limit legislation. The central staff in Senator Brooks' office decided to come at this, uh, the twenty-five mile per hour speed limit legislation from a different angle. Instead of changing vehicle traffic law sixteen forty-three, as all previous versions of this bill have done, and target the general term state roads, they used a twenty-sixteen bill from Suffolk County as a precedent to amend the language of our bill. And that bill often, or authorizes the villages of, um, Sag Harbor and East Hampton to reduce speed limits on portions of, uh, specifically listed highways. They cited traffic calming, safety, tourism, you know, all the things. We also cite as reasons for needing the, the local, um, exception to the thirty mile per hour speed limit. So this new version of our bill in the Senate takes a similar approach, calling out the names of our roads that are currently not under village jurisdiction. So State, Monroe, North and South Main, East and West, Jefferson, and Washington Road. And the language of the bill indicates a limited local exception, and specifically calls out the names of the roads that we need to target without the use of the general term state roads, which, um, the central staff believed, um, DOT would, would take issue with. And they believe that this will receive less objection from New York State DOT because of its, it's just more specific and limited in its local exception language. So I will, um, send everyone around this, the new version of the bill, and I'll also let you, I'll send a link to the, the one from twenty-sixteen to, uh, the, the bill, uh, that changed the speed limit jurisdiction for Sag Harbor and East Hampton. And, um, I will send it around, Jeff, for you to take a look, too. And, um, we're hoping, they've already contacted, um, Senator, or, uh, Assembly, uh, person Burns' office, um, to try to get them to do the, the same language in the assembly, and then we'll have an updated bill, and, um, we'll need to do a new home rule, um, resolution when both of those bills have been amended. So I had hoped to do that tonight, but it just didn't happen yet. They're not quite ready. Um, does anyone have any questions?
Good progress, though, Renee, and thank you for all your work in stewarding this bill through.
We're trying. We'll see if this works.
Okay. And then the last item we have is about the State Street Bridge closing, the one item. There is a meeting tomorrow with DOT, and I think I invited both Renee and Lily to attend. So the two of you are going to have to figure out who attends with me.
We're going to arm wrestle later.
The DOT is, uh, proposing to replace, that they have more money, so they're going to replace the deck on the North Main Street Bridge, like they did on the State Street Bridge. And we'll find more information about that tomorrow at the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And any other items?
Um, Bob, I'll need.
Go, go ahead, Dorothea. You first.
Just real quick, when the board is done, I will need an executive session on employee matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Lily, you had your hand up next.
I do. Is it time for member items?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Uh, my first member item is that I would like to, and I, uh, with everything else that was, uh, transpiring this, uh, evening, I did not want to, uh, leave the meeting without formally, uh, and publicly thanking Frank Galusha for his years on the, uh, Board of Trustees. Uh, he has been such an excellent steward, uh, of, um, of our village, and especially in the, in the areas of finance and the DPW. Um, you're right, more than any other trustee, I think in the history that I can recall. Uh, and he does such an excellent job, uh, that I wanted to, uh, to, to thank him publicly with that before the evening passed. And I think he knows the depth of my esteem for him, uh, personally as well. Uh, every inch a gentleman, always and, uh, in every situation. So I thank him for that. Uh, the second item is that I have received a, a request for another park bench dedication. Uh, this one will be placed on State Street, uh, in the area between, uh, the village line near Wood Creek and Shane, uh, the Northfield Common entrance. And the bench will be, um, I mentioned the name because people might, might remember her. Mrs. Rose, Mrs. Margaret Rose, was a elementary school teacher at Jefferson Road School for many years. And the, um, Women's Club of Pittsburgh is donating the bench in her honor. And she spent her last years at Wood Creek, so they felt it was appropriate for the, uh, for it to be placed on State Street, because there's no place to sit between Wood Creek and the village. So a lot of the older residents also walk that path, and it will give them a place to, um, take a little respite during their walk. So I'm very happy about that. Yeah, it would be lovely.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Dan, and you have something also?
Yeah, it's, it's about the CCA, and, um, last time we had the CCA, um, they were going to consult with Bob and me in early April, um, when it goes out to bid, and they need a resolution from us. So we, we have to change that, given that Bob won't be involved in that in early April. Jeff, do you have, um, how do we do that? They sent an email over to us this, uh, I just saw it today.
So Dorothea sent me the, the language from the meeting at which you discussed this. I had not yet joined the meeting at that, for that meeting. So I looked at the minutes. I've been in touch with, uh, Rock Tricity, Susan Hughes-Smith, to figure out what they need exactly. Uh, I've been in touch with the Aranda Coyote Attorney, who has a similar resolution. So I'm working up a resolution to, that will incorporate what it appears happened at the trustee meeting, and then I will get that out. And it will say mayor, it won't, it won't matter who the mayor is when the meeting happens. Okay, good. Okay. All right, if there are no other items, I will make a motion.
Um, I, I, this is Lisa. Um, I, this is Lisa.
One, one thing on that, Jeff.
Go ahead, Dan.
Jeff, sooner the better on that. It's the 23rd, and they were talking about early April. So I'm hoping, do you think you can get that done in the next week?
Yeah, a week's not a problem. I was just going to tell you, I had, I'm going to have cataract surgery tomorrow, so it won't be tomorrow. So...
Good luck on that, Jeff.
Oh, that's all right. I had, I just, this is the next, I had the first one done already.
Just take your laptop with you, Jeff. What's the problem?
What's that?
Just take your laptop with you. Close one eye. It's getting tired. No.
They recommend me, recommend against me doing any kind of serious work or, or things that I'm going to be responsible for. I'm not sure why, but anyway, I'll get it, I'll get it out early next week.
So, good luck to you, Steve. This is Lisa Cove calling, or calling, Lisa Cove, Lisa Cove speaking. May I speak?
Yes, you may.
So Bob, I didn't do any formal thank you, thank you, thank yous tonight, because everybody said such great stuff, and I agree with all of that. And you know how I feel, and I've talked to you privately about how wonderful I think you are and how much you've done for our village. I'm always a believer that actions speak louder than words. So I would like to propose, in collaboration with the Village of Pittsburgh's HPP and the Historic Pittsburgh Incorporated, an annual Robert Corby Historic Preservation Day and Award. I visualize the day to be every second Saturday of May going forward, which is National Historic Preservation Month, which is May, to include celebration activities in the village with residents and businesses alike to acknowledge the 28 years of Robert Corby's mayoral service with a significant, significant focus on historic preservation. I, I want to involve, you know, not only the village, but also the town and everybody involved to make this a celebratory day in honor of preservation. I also want to add a Village of Pittsburgh's Annual Historic Preservation Award, which will be chosen each year by a vote from the HPP with approval from the Historic Pittsburgh's Board, to a project that shows exemplary historic preservation with a coordinated effort of repurposing creative use and architectural appreciation of the property in the neighborhood. Guidelines already used by the HPP when deciding on approvals will be strongly supported in deciding on each year's winner. I'm proposing to start that this year with the winner going to the Cobblestone Schoolhouse, formerly known as the Masonic Temple or the Masonic House. We want to give the award to not only the contractor, but also the homeowner in collaboration to, to accept the award, hopefully doing it on Saturday, May 15. This is an opportunity going forward to use the award winner as possibly a way to fundraise for Historic Pittsburgh, maybe kind of coordinating a home tour with the home winner. Maybe this year, if we do that, it could be a virtual one just because of COVID. But maybe going forward, we could do that house as a home tour, sell tickets so that people can view the home, and then all the monies will go to Historic Pittsburgh. So these are just ideas that I would like to bring forth. But the real formal proposal here is the actual day to be dedicated as the Robert Corby Historic Preservation Day and Award. So I don't know what else I need to do with that, if that has to be voted on, or if this is something that needs to be discussed, but I wanted to bring that forward tonight.
Discussion from the board?
Thank you. Thank you. This is Trustee Lanfear. Yes, I think, Dorothea and Jeff, we would need, the board would need guidance as to exactly how this would occur. I would assume that it would require a resolution, and the resolution would need to be written and sent to the trustees for their review prior to the next meeting, and we could discuss it at that meeting. Is that, is that...
If it's going to be a formal board action, yes, it's going to take a resolution, and that, it was not on the agenda, would not be proper to do anything like that tonight. But certainly, that is something that, that Lisa and the HPP could put together and submit to the trustees for their consideration.
Bob, may I speak? This is Peggy Brzezinski.
Yes, yes, you may.
Lisa and I have been talking about this concept for a while now. And I have not had a chance to run this through my board, but the concept we've, I would, I fully support in terms of honoring you and also identifying not only village properties, but also involving the town Historic Preservation Board and some other things that Historic Pittsburgh might want to be doing down the road. But I fully endorse having the village set a day aside every preservation month to honor you and to make that award from the Historic Preservation Board of the Village.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I just get a feeling from the other board members, what your thoughts are on this?
This is Trustee Lanfear. I think conceptually, I'm certainly interested to hear what the proposal would be, and what the village's role. I, I would understand that the, what you're looking for is a naming of a day in honor of Bob Corby. That's what it sounded is if our role, that that would be our part of this, and that the Historic Pittsburgh would be setting up the event and running the event. It doesn't have anything to do with the village. What you're asking us as a Board of Trustees is to name a day in honor of Bob Corby. May 15 is the date, I believe. So I believe that would be the specific request that you would make to the board.
Yes, and we haven't laid out the specific details as to who actually, you know, kind of runs the events, but that's something that we'd like to work on. And as far as the village goes, the Historic Preservation Board would, you know, take the lead on, you know, going through the applicants and finding somebody who's appropriate, and then doing the vote on that. So if that means the village's responsibility, then that would be also what we're asking for the HPP to be allowed to do that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
Certainly interested to hear the proposal. That is my opinion, Trustee Lanfear.
Thanks, Lilly.
I also love the idea of recognizing a project that has been done well. As a, as an appreciator and owner of these old houses, I really love it when people adaptively reuse and, and think creatively of how to, how to take these old houses and make them livable in today's time. So I love the idea of recognizing a project every year or two.
Thank you, Renee. Frank, do you have any thoughts or any guidance that you want to give to me as I'm thinking of writing this proposal? Is Frank there?
Are you asking me?
Yes, Frank. Is there any, any words of wisdom you want to pass by to me?
I think the day should be, should be commemorated with an award to a village resident for historic preservation, either a commercial building or a residence. So you could mark the day as a Bob Corby day, and you could give an award to someone who, who exemplifies historic preservation. It would, it would make the day a little more meaningful.
Yes, that's exactly what, what we were thinking of doing. Exactly. That, that's what the day is going to entail. It's going to entail the, kind of the recognition of historic preservation in honor of Bob with an award winner on that day, given by the mayor, to the, the winner on that actual day. Dan, how about you? Any words of wisdom you can pass by me? What, what are your thoughts?
No, I just, I love what Frank had to just add there. Frank added just a little clause in there around also a commercial building. That was interesting, too. I hadn't thought of that, so.
Yes, and that was, that was my thought, too. We were going to do residential, yes, both. Yep.
I love that Masonic Temple. Boy, that's, they really did a nice job on that place.
Yeah, yeah. We just think that that would be a great highlight here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I will get the proposal into you guys, so that hopefully we can get that on the agenda for next meeting, because as you know, May comes really quick, and the next meeting's the middle of April. So I suspect that both me and Historic Pittsburgh, Peggy, will be talking and working out some details so that we can move forward if you guys approve that next meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Peggy.
And I believe we, we had an executive session planned tonight. Is that correct, Dorothea?
I need a matter I need to review with the board.
Okay. I'll make a motion. Is this a personnel issue?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss a personnel issue, and we'll have to ask everybody to leave the room.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
You got a second on that?
Good night. Yes, we need a second and a vote.
Oh, second, Stetser.
Thank you, Renee. Dorothea, would you call a vote, please?
Yep. Trustee Stetser?
Stetser, aye.
Trustee Galusha?
Trustee Galusha, aye.
Trustee Lanfear? Lilly, you're muted?
Muted, muted, sorry. Aye. Lanfear.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Corby?
Corby, aye.
Motion passes. I'm going to stop recording.